Oh guardian of life and liberty, may our nation always merit your protection. Teach us to give thanks for what we have by sharing it with those who are in need. Keep our eyes open to the wonders of creation and alert to the care of the earth. May we never be lazy in the work of peace. May we honor those who have died in our defense of our ideals. Grant our leaders wisdom and forbearance. May they govern with justice and compassion. Help us all to appreciate one another and to respect the many ways that we may serve you. May our homes be safe from affliction and strife and our country be sound in body and spirit. God bless the city of Groveland, the state of Florida, and the United States of America. Amen. Thank you. Jerry, would you please take a roll?
Yes. Mayor Keith Keigho.
Here.
Vice Mayor Barbara Gaines.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Jug Harrow.
Here.
Councilmember Judith Fike.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Razik.
Here.
City manager Mike Hine.
Here.
Attorney Sandy Minkoff.
Here.
Sergeant at Arms Chief Sean Ramsey.
City Clerk Virginia Wright here.
Thank you, and we have a quorum. I now like to turn the mic over to Mr. Razik, who has an announcement.
Mr. Mayor, as I'm sure, and council, as I'm sure you all know, that anything that's brought into a city council meeting, including cell phones, could be subjected to a public records request. I bring that up because I will be monitoring or texting with my wife, who is in Southlake Hospital. Additionally, as you saw last week, I had to leave early. It wasn't for this particular issue, but if we're not done by nine o'clock, I'm gonna have to leave again to get up to the hospital, so.
Thank you. Councilman Razik, can please pass on our best wishes and get well soon to your wife. I know she's fighting a battle, and we wish her the best.
You talking about fighting a battle being married to me, or the health?
Both, yes. Okay, next up, guest speakers, presentations, and proclamations. Proclamation Pride Month, Councilwoman Fike, will you please read the proclamation?
This way, so I don't have to have my back to everybody. Proclamation LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Whereas June 2025 marks the beginning of LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, it's important to note that Pride Month began in June of 1969 on the first anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City. The LGBTQIA+ community, predominantly Black and Brown transgender women, fought against constant police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional and. Whereas, as the city of Groveland, Florida, we firmly believe that every person, regardless of gender identity, deserves to be treated with dignity and respect. We are committed to promoting equality and freedom for all members of the LGBTQIA+ community who are welcome to live, work, and play in our city. We believe that every family, regardless of its form, deserves a place to call home and where they are safe, happy, affirmed, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas, we strongly denounce prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes. We believe that such discrimination is an insult to our country and our fundamental principles and. Whereas, we recognize and applaud the LGBTQIA+ community's numerous cultural civic and economic contributions, which have continued to have a positive impact. We are fully committed to fostering an environment that supports and celebrates all members of our community, including young LGBTQIA+ people, who deserve to feel safe, supported, and celebrated regardless of their sexual orientation and. Whereas, we stand with the LGBTQIA+ community in Florida and beyond. We are unequivocally committed to promoting inclusivity, diversity, and equality. We urge all residents to recognize and honor the contributions made by members of the LGBTQIA+ community and actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice. We encourage everyone to eliminate all forms of prejudice wherever and whenever it exists and celebrate that our great diversity by participating in the LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. Despite being marginalized, much work still needs to be done in the forms of civil, political, and social justice, and LGBTQIA+ people will continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. Now therefore, I Keith Keigho, Mayor of the City of Groveland, on behalf of the City Council on Lake County Pride and all LGBTQIA+ citizens of Florida, allies and residents, we recognize and honor the contributions made by members of the LGBTQIA+ community and firmly commit to actively promoting and protecting the principles equality, liberty, and justice for all. In witness thereof, Mayor Keigho has heron two set his hand and calls the great seal of the city of Groveland to be affixed to this date of June 16th in the year of our Lord 2025. And I would like to invite Robin Maynard Harris and her wife and all of the allies and supporters of this community to come up and accept this proclamation. Up as well, please.
Get a picture. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Nope. I'm sorry, Groveland Fire Department, I switched too many pages there, I apologize. Groveland Fire Department, hurricane season preparedness and overview, very important. Can we come on forward and tell us what we've got to do?
I only get to do this like one time a year, so I like to put on a good show as best I can. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Mr. Hine has asked me to come up and just give you a brief overview of the status and state of emergency management here in the city of Groveland. That falls under my purview. If you don't know, emergency management consists of a one-man department and all the other city employees, but we all coordinate very, very well. I'm just the lucky guy who gets to be a kind of take point on emergency management activities in the city. So I see they've got the PowerPoint put up for us. I want to talk just real briefly, a little reminder of 2024, and then we'll dive into 2025, and then I want to offer some information to the public about some resources they can tap into to better prepare for the season going forward. So this was a graphic from the end of hurricane season last year. The top graphic was all the named storms from last year, and you can see there was quite a few. On the bottom graphic, you can see really the only three that affected us was Milton and Milton mostly. A little bit of Helene and Debbie didn't bother us too much, but that was at the end of last year looked like, and they said last year was supposed to be a heavy season for Florida. So every year we look just ahead of hurricane season, which starts June 1st and is November 30th. Colorado State University annually has a great program where they do their storm predictions for the year, as well as NOAA and some other agencies, but I was default to Colorado State University. They're predicting 17 named storms this year, and of those nine to be hurricanes, and of those nine, they're anticipating four of them to be major hurricanes. And the major hurricanes are category three, four, and five, the big nasty ones. NOAA also kind of is in concurrence with Colorado State University, their numbers are about the same. You can see on the right side of that graphic, but what's curious is they're predicting a 60% probability of above normal season. And they're saying there's a lot to do with just the weather conditions, the weather conditions and prevailing winds that will change over the course as the summer goes on. We're gonna lose some of those wind effects that normally will help keep hurricanes at bay, so they're not. They're saying that those may not exist very much this summer, which is kind of scary. There's a lot of information on this slide, but I think the core to it is in the middle, where they talk about the probabilities for at least one major hurricane, again, a category three to five, making a landfall in one of the following three coastal areas. So the first one is the entire continental U.S. with a 51% probability. But you look at the data next to it, and in a 140-year average, it's 43%. So we're up in that coastal area as well. The second one, which is basically the East Coast of the United States, including Florida, 26% probability for a major hurricane, and the 140-year average is only 21%. And I'm saying that just to make sure I'm driving home the point that we're gonna look at having to contend with an above-normal season for sure. And the last one is just the Gulf Coast, including the Florida Panhandle over to Texas, 33% probability of a major storm, when again, that data set is only at an average of 27%. These are the first 21 names. I hope we don't go through all 21 of them this year. We always joke around when we start looking at each hurricane season as it comes up and try to guess which name the storm will be that will impact Groveland. Everyone's picking Karen, and I don't know why, but we all kind of make bets and we'll see what happens at the end of the year. So what have we done here in Groveland for our preparatory actions? There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes. We do a lot of things throughout the course of the year, but especially as we get towards the beginning of hurricane season, things kind of ramp up in April and May, at least for me. Things ramp up quite a bit, but we want to be ready and turnkey come June 1st, and that's the goal. And not everything happens by June 1st, but we've got a five-month season, and we've got time. So one of the things we did back in May was we had an internal stakeholder training session with some city staff and all the various departments, in which we did a little tabletop exercise. We simulated a hurricane that came right through Groveland, and we talked about all of the important things each department has to do in terms of preparation, days in advance, during, and then after a hurricane, so we can ensure our continuity of operations for the city going forward. It was a very fruitful exercise, we'll do that every year. A number of us participated in some county-wide emergency management training, and basically that was just an update on the emergency management software that we kind of interface with Lake County Emergency Management and in our emergency operations center here in Groveland. Our fuel dispenser, I know you've heard a lot about the fuel dispenser. It's on, it's up and running. So we've rolled in the fire department so far, only a few little snafus, but we've got everything ironed out. The fire department's been fueling up from it, both diesel and gas, and we're gonna roll in the police department next month, and then everyone else should fall in line pretty quickly after that. But the important thing about having that fuel dispenser, and I just want to make sure that the public knows that, you know, when we have a hurricane like Milton and then there are large areas without power, that includes gas stations where we would normally fuel up from, racetrack, 7-Eleven, et cetera. And if they don't have power and their generators don't work, we can't get fuel. So that's been an issue for us in the past. We've had to drive pretty far to find diesel to keep the fire trucks running. And so that kind of drove that whole project. We have an independent source of gasoline and diesel now, and it can run all city vehicles based on 2023 consumption for about a month. So we are independent now of the retail sales. We may have a little cost savings when we buy fuel wholesale, but we will always have fuel because we have a backup generator, and we'll make sure that works all the time. Anyway, that's a big thing for us. Social media, there's been some postings on the city's Facebook page, as well as the fire department's Facebook page, something we've been pumping out since the beginning of hurricane season, was all the disaster preparedness. Have your checklist ready. All the other disaster preparedness, hurricane season-related things have been put on social media, and we'll continue to do that, but don't want to do it too much because people tend to get overloaded and end up ignoring that stuff over time. The fun team, Fun Team is a group of city employees. They have a small group, and it's kind of an internal morale group, and we go around and we take care of our city employees and host events and things like that for them. And so, and I'm on the Fun Team. So as a charter member of the Fun Team, I was pushing to have our last internal event kind of hurricane season-related, and we did, and so for two days, we did a disaster preparedness Fun Team event where employees got to come out and get popcorn and snow cones, but got information on how to prepare themselves, their families, for any disaster. Working on updating the city's disaster pay policy, that has been updated last year or so, but we still have to iron out a few things that we found when requesting reimbursement of funds through FEMA. We need to just tighten up some of the language in that, and that should be done fairly shortly here. We're coordinating a lot better now between emergency management, and I guess that means me, and finance. We've got a great team in the finance now, I'll tell you. Not that there haven't been great people in their previous two, but pardon me, there are some very talented people in there right now that have some experience in dealing with filing through FEMA's portal, the public assistance grant requests. And that's, you know, we found out through with Milton that we had quite a bit of expenses. We're trying to recoup those costs back. And so now we've got some very talented people and knowledgeable people in there, and so we've talked about what we didn't do for Milton to make their job easier and what we need to do going forward so that streamlines that process a little bit. I will say though, that any reimbursement through FEMA usually takes quite a while, and that's an ongoing process still with finance. One of our partners here in town, Kroger's Distribution Center, they actually, every hurricane season, they distribute to the local EOCs a bulk supply of shelf food for anybody who has to work in the emergency operations center during a hurricane. So thanks to them, we've got a storage room full of snacks and treats and drinks and things like that to help sustain us if we have to activate our emergency operations center for any length of time, but I wanted to make note of that. We've got plenty of bottled water for during and after. We have 35,000 sandbags. More than we're ever gonna need for this year, but I think we did go through probably about 10,000 to 12,000 bags, maybe 15 between Helene and Milton last year. But we're ready to go, and we're ready to stand up a sandbag site, you know, within a moment's notice. Worked a lot with IT, we've met a couple of times, and thanks to them, they know what our challenges are. With basically connectivity, we want to make sure that we have that connectivity with the internal Intranet and the external Internet, as well as the cell phones, city cell phones that we have, apps that we use, and some of the functionality that we give to the police and the fire department on their cell phones to capture damage out in the field after a storm has come and gone. So they've been fantastic, but we are real well-coordinated. Public Works and Finance are working on a debris management contracts. So what we've found in the past, you know, the remnants after a hurricane, the most noticeable thing is power being out and debris all over the roads and trees down and limbs like that. And everybody wants that picked up as quickly as possible, and that's always very, very challenging because it's resource limited and it's quantity influenced. So when there's a lot and we have limited resources, you know, we have to tap into other things to remove that debris. So we currently fall under the county's contract for debris management, and that basically means that after a storm, the contracts they have in place, those contractors will end up coming through and picking up debris and managing the debris on our behalf. Unfortunately, when we fall under the county's contract, we might be the last ones to have that happen. So we can, may end up being kind of last in line and within cleaning up our own streets. So we do do that on our own and have done that on our own, and we're looking at, Finance and Public Works are hammering through some contract language, I believe. I don't think it's moved forward yet. But to have some contractors onsite that will be able to monitor our debris, which is very important, has to be monitored, and then the debris management and disposal. And there's a lot that goes behind that and goes into that, and it's very highly regulated. Can no longer just put a football-sized field of dead trees and light it on fire anymore. There's a little bit more that goes into that. But anyway, we're trying to make that process a little bit better going forward. So some of the helpful links I just want to put out to you and to the members of the public. My favorite website in terms of disaster preparedness is ready.gov. It gives you checklists for all kinds of disasters, emergency preparedness in general, lots and lots of resources. It's a good one to go to, ready.gov. Another one you may want to follow if you're on Facebook is Lake County Emergency Management. You can follow them, they often have a lot of posts. A lot of our messaging mirrors what they are sending out in terms of messaging through social media during a hurricane. So, but if you want to follow them on Facebook as well. FloridaDisaster.org, that's Florida Division of Emergency Management's website. They have resources on there as well. I always like to leave or add this to any presentation I've had, and some people have seen it before, but underneath all that spaghetti is the state of Florida, and that is a 100-year representation of named storms for the last 100 years. And I say that only to make the point and show this to make the point that really nowhere in Florida is immune to the impacts of these storms, and you can see central Florida isn't immune either. The last slide I'll leave you with is a QR code. That QR code, if anybody in the audience wants to put your phone on that, that'll take you right to ready.gov. Lot of great resources and checklists, and make sure you're prepared yourself, you're prepared for your pets, and your families and friends and loved ones are taken care of in the event of a hurricane that may be coming our way. That's all I have for you, unless you have anything for me.
Any questions?
Yeah.
One or two. Deputy Chief, what, first off, you've done a great job since you've been here. We really have never had emergency response day the way that we have. With that said, based on last year, what don't we have that you need? Or what do we have that may need an upgrade to tackle all this?
So, you know, we always want to jump out and grab all the debris right away and get back to normal. get back to normal. I think that's a psychological thing, you know, not just for in terms of running government, but in terms of people's perception, is they want to return back to normal as quickly as possible. With the debris removal, there's vegetative debris, trees, and then there's other non-vegetative, which is, could be roofing and things like that, and they're disposed of differently. We have very limited means in town. We have two front-end loaders and a claw truck, and we have a handful of people that know how to operate them. So when we take that endeavor on by ourselves, we're kind of limited in that aspect for our capability right there, and we're dependent upon others to help us out with that. So I think that's one of the biggest things. We end up partnering and piecing everything together on our own, and then what we don't have, or if we have any immediate needs, we'll reach out and make requests to the county.
So what about landscaping companies that would, or tree trimming companies or otherwise that could help out? Is there anything in place for anything like that?
You know, they have, they have helped in the past, but again, the debris management is, is highly regulated, and you have to be certified to be able to burn these things. The trucks have to be measured trucks to say how many cubic yards of debris that they can hold. Those number of truckloads have to be counted. The trucks have to be inspected to make sure there's no false compartments inside of them, falsely making the load look larger. So, you know, I would say in a pinch if we had to, but if we're going to go straight for debris management and, and follow, follow FEMA guidelines and expect reimbursement down the line, we really just got to do it by the numbers.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Questions?
I'm good.
Just a couple, after last year's storm, I had a lot of requests on where, why don't we have a shelter in, in Groveland? And the city manager let me know that we don't get to pick that, but we might need to have some way to let people know where the nearest shelters are because there were a lot of, of people asking, why didn't we have something there? And so with, with the risk, is it, is it wind or is it water here in Groveland that's the biggest risk?
I don't think water is, although it is a factor for sure. We didn't see too much localized flooding. Green Valley, the mobile home park over there, they were under six inches of water for months, but that's in the county, not in the city. So we didn't see a lot of longer-term standing water anyway. Our roadways weren't flooded out. We didn't have standing water shutting roads down. I think wind is our, is our biggest thing at this point.
Okay. And then last, is there any way to determine, do they, does Colorado tell you if the hurricanes are going to come early? Because like two years ago, they came early, last year they seemed to come late. Are they, are they able to tell us what the sweet spot is?
Well, so really it's a roll of the dice, but statistically, if you look at the data analytics, it's the end of, end of the summer, August and September is really when you see the average peak. Like, that's the scariest time for me. I tell everybody, don't go on vacation, you need to be here because we may see storms. The likelihood of, of the hurricanes are at the end of summer, and that is statistically shown. Yes.
Any no other questions? Thank you. Very good job. Appreciate it. Okay, very good, and thank you. While you're picking up your little folders back there, remember we have the speaker forms. If you want to speak later on, please go ahead and fill out your form so that we could give it to Jenny. Moving on to consent agenda, we have, anybody from the council like to see anything off the consent agenda? Are we okay? I see none. Well, then I would ask for 2025-03 to be moved under old business, if possible, please. Anybody from the, from our citizens? Any citizens want anything off the consent agenda to be heard separately? Okay, seeing none. Jenny, would you like to read the titles?
Yes. Consideration of Approval, May 19th, 2025, City Council Workshop Minutes, June 2nd, 2025, City Council Workshop Minutes. Resolution 2025-36, Amending the Utility Easement for the Charter School Located at 131 Wilson Lake Parkway to Include Electrical Utilities for CECO. Ordinance 2025-7, Amending City Code Relating to Advertising Election Qualifying Period and Election to Remove Requirement That At Least One Advertisement Must Be Published on a Sunday. Second Reading. An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Groveland, Florida, Amending Section 26-4 of the City of Groveland Code of Ordinances Relating to Advertising of Election Qualification Period and Election to Remove the Requirement That At Least One Advertisement Must Be Published on a Sunday, Providing for Codification, Providing for Severability, and Conflicts, Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as outlined?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, will we please take the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Fike, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Radzick?
Aye.
Councilmember Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
Aye.
Mayor Keough?
Aye.
Moving on to new business. Item one, Groveland Property Investment LLC, Request for Temporary Waiver.
Mayor? We would do the old business that you moved, the item, item D.
Okay. Thank you. Can we go ahead and read the title to that, please?
Yes. Old Business, Ordinance 2025-3, Amending Chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Groveland to Update Deposit Policies and to Update Utility-Related Fees and Rates by Amending Rates for Potable Water and Irrigation Water Meters, as Well as Adopting Regulations and Fees Associated with Portable Hydrant Meters, Repealing Portions of Appendix A Fee Schedule in Subpart B Land Development Code, Second Reading. An Ordinance of the City of Groveland, County of Lakes, State of Florida, Amending Chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Groveland to Update Deposit Policies and to Update Utility-Related Fees and Rates by Amending Rates for Potable Water and Irrigation Water Meters, as Well as Adopting Regulations and Fees Associated with Portable Hydrant Meters, Repealing Portions of Appendix A Fee Schedule in Subpart B Land Development Code, Providing for Codification and Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you. As we, Mr. Fish, do you want to come forward and kind of explain this, or do you want me to go? Mr., Mr. City Manager, would you like to explain?
Mr. Fish will be glad to come up and explain. And Mr. Fish will recall that this is a conversation he and I, and I believe the mayor, reached out to him on the consent agenda item that was pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the screen.
This is the fire hydrant meters.
Yes, sir. My file is laying there. My apologies. Yeah, we have the second reading of the ordinance, which the first reading, the summary, was we've got some housekeeping internally that we recognize that as our meter costs to the city have increased, and staff did a deeper dive with the finance department, we recognize what would be most beneficial to the city is to cover the actual cost of not just the meters themselves, but all the associated appurtenances, which is dual checks and the other parts that go with the meters, meter boxes, and make sure we're capturing everything effectively because we were historically based on code that was put in that focused really just on the meter. So correcting that, as this ordinance does, it captures not only that, but the actual cost for staff, whether it be Witter and Curran or direct staff, someone has to go and place those meters, and that does require staff time up to three hours, so that's been built in. And then standard under our finance department for administrative fee tied to these type of items, there's a 15% administrative fee built in that gives you those resulting fees per meter. The primary meter that would be of most concern are the meters that home builders purchase for new housing starts. So those meters are typically either, we call them three-quarter meters historically, the meters that are going in, technically, if you look at the math, 5'8", 3/4" inch, they're basically the same. So that's the typical residential that we often talk about for potable meters at homes or irrigation meters at home. So you can see that that adjustment takes us from just under $500 to $765. I'm doing this from memory because I left my file laying on the chair. So I wanted to offer that because what we've done is make sure through a coordinated and collaborative effort with finance and public works, that we have captured everything that Witter and Curran deals with, and purchasing the meters from Ferguson, our supplier, making sure we're covering everything, all the pieces and parts, the labor, and then the administration to be able to issue and follow up on all those service orders to ensure the meters are handled. One other detail in that ordinance that is small but important is that especially new construction needs a source of water. So that typical source, we don't want to just give it away, and we certainly do not like contractors tapping into our system without permission. So we have policy and fees associated with portable meters, not potable, but portable, that are attached to fire hydrants, and those are metered, and then the associated costs are charged back to the contractor, who is typically the one that pays the deposit and basically rents those fire hydrant meters. So that's a quick summary. With any questions that you want details, I'll grab my file real quick while you ask your question.
You don't need your file. I think we'll just wrap them all into one. And my question was that I wanted on the, on the record is, how did we get to these numbers? We've doubled all the costs from 300 to 765, from 400 to 1,025 for one inch. We have, we've taken the 75 for good credit hookup, and now it's 200 as well as the 150. I just want to be on the record is how we came up with this pricing because it's a substantial jump.
It is. And the answer is, historically, the focus was charging for the meter as a unit. And as we looked at it collaboratively, both on the public works side as well as the finance side, we recognized, well, we're also incurring costs for those parts that go along with these meters, whether it be the box, the dual checks, et cetera. And then the factor was, we've got to recapture this labor because it continues to go up that, especially with home builders, it's not as simple as it sounds. You think you go and place a meter, often they disappear, we have to go back, we have to charge them again sometimes. And so that labor ends up being, for example, $150 to set the meter. And then on top of that, you've got the administration of city hall staff that handles all the service orders, the transactions, the follow-up to ensure the installation, and then the closeout of those service orders. So all total, that's truly capturing the cost to the city, and so we're sophisticated this process through this ordinance of actually charging everything.
Okay, so my, my next question would be, since you're an enterprise, right?
Correct.
Have we been subsidizing the meters over the past years, and now we're going to break even? Or is this above even?
I would characterize it as slightly above even because we're making sure that administrative fee covers anything that's unanticipated, that could be extended staff time. But to answer your question, the true recouping was just of those meter costs with a little fee charged on for installation. I think this is a much more comprehensive approach and better fiscally for the city of Groveland.
Okay, and then my last, just observation, and maybe you can take another look at it under the business impact estimate. Number two is an estimate of direct economic impact of the proposed ordinance on private for-profit businesses, and we put down there's no economic impact. After reading through some of this one-inch, two-inch, and all that stuff, it seems like there would be an economic impact. So you, you might want to either answer that or take a look at it as the way the language is written.
Yes, sir. I'll be happy to review that with the city attorney and make sure, again, this was the first one under the new statute that that was prepared, and the, the answers given were, we're not actually impacting a budget decision. We will just recoup those revenues and build this new ordinance amount into next year's budget as projected based on the number of homes we expect.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I could amplify that, that, that doesn't mean to say there's no cost to a business. It's the statutory requirement about citywide business impact. And this is a continuation of our efforts to make growth pay for itself as opposed, as opposed to subsidizing that growth.
Data, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Radzick?
I have a couple of questions. TJ, going back to the mayor's question about what was used to build up to a new fee that covers staff time, do you have some sort of a metric with regards to that? That it's going to take three hours, and the new rate used to be $20 an hour, and now I got people making $27 an hour? I mean, if somebody came in and literally wanted to see, cost accounting-wise, do we have that?
So, yeah, we, not only do we have the meters and the appurtenances fully captured in this ordinance, but we are building in $150 installation labor charge because the typical total cost of labor is about three hours for our utility staff, and then a standard 15% admin fee.
Okay. So the one thing that you did not touch on was updating deposit policies. So I suggest, I suspect that you're talking about the water deposits that someone is giving?
Yes, sir.
So where does that, where does that money go right now? If I come in and I got new service, where's my deposit going besides the bank? I guess my question is, is it going into its own bank account?
Deposits are handled just as part of our normal finance function, that they're collected into the enterprise fund.
And that, and that would be in an interest-bearing account, I would imagine.
That's my understanding, as with the enterprises.
So why don't I get interest on my 20 years' worth of water deposits that's been there? If you're earning the interest, and I'm not trying to be combative, but if the city of Groveland is earning interest on it, why aren't I getting interest on what I've had there for 20 years?
Well, as far as the, the policy behind the deposits, I'll speak to the fact that what we recognize to even recommend the new $200 amount is that is to cover the typical delinquent bill that it was undercharging to be only charging $150. So finance recommended to at least increase it to $200 to be able to cover an average bill that may go delinquent. And yes, it sits in the enterprise fund. I can't speak to interest-bearing, you know, that, that's the finance department's function rather than public works. But I will say that for businesses, a minimum of $200 with the ability for us to look at two and a half months of usage and what their bill would be to make sure for larger, not small businesses, because small businesses typically, the 200 would likely be sufficient. But if it's a larger company, let's say it's a major industrial customer in our commerce park, that we could revert to the clause about the two and a half months of typical charges.
I'd like to get a consensus of the council to direct the staff into looking at customer deposit policies to see what I'm asking, which is, you're holding my money for 20 years, you're getting interest, why aren't I getting interest? Sort of a nominal amount.
I'll ask for that, but the way I would have answered that is that, that interest goes back into the, the fund that helps finance everything we're doing, and so it keeps your bill down rather than having it refunded where we'll have to raise the bill to offset that.
Show me.
Okay, that's, that's his job.
Yes, sir.
Sure. We have a consensus on, would you outline that one more time?
Basically, we've got customer deposits. I'm suggesting if it's going into an interest-bearing account, that I should get interest on my 20-year, five-years, whatever. Or when do I get my deposit back? Okay? I don't know if that's, that's.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman Radzick, you're just asking for a consensus to direct us to look into that?
Yes.
I don't think we need a consensus. I think we can direct staff to do that.
Thank you. Makes it much easier.
Thanks.
Further questions? Ms. Fike?
Just a simple question, TJ. Looking at your information up here, it says a three-inch and above, I assume we're talking a pipe, will be required to be compound meter types with costs to be determined, to be determined by the city VA quote. Do we have any of those three-inch pipes out there that we know what our past cost was that might indicate what a future cost may be, or is that just a case-by-case basis? Let's go out and get a quote.
It often is case-by-case, and we do treat those larger meters for very good reason separately because not only are you suggesting that the meter itself is a much more expensive meter, but that projected usage for industrial, commercial, it is absolutely going to be something, it's not just this fee, it's are we charging the right impact fees? Is it for fire suppression or other use? So there's several things that we need to answer before we just make the transaction.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
When was the last time this fee schedule was updated?
I cannot accurately speak to that because I'm not aware of it being amended. I know that that was one of the drivers, is we've been administratively addressing the increase in meter costs, and as we looked at this deeper, we realized, although it, the issue for us is, it's in the code. So even though it should be a schedule, you just adopt, you know, update year to year, this required an actual two-reading ordinance, and finally, glad to bring this before you.
And then how much have the meters themselves gone up? Like approximately, it doesn't have to be an exact number, like percentage-wise?
Since I've been in Groveland, I would say they are in the 75% increase range. I mean, you know, inflationary costs the last five years have been more than usual.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is this done in installments or is it all paid at one time?
It is all paid at one time and typically by a home builder that's building a new home, typically, like ninety-five-plus percent of the time. Rarely, we get someone that needs to connect to our water for the first time. That happens a lot along Cherry Lake Road where wells are failing. And then they would pay the same impact fee and meter fees that you would be adopting by second reading tonight, one-time fee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comment? Oh, motion. Thank you, Mr. Radzick. Do we have a motion to accept?
A motion to accept.
I'll second.
Motion to accept twenty twenty-five dash oh-three is made and seconded. Can we go ahead and have any further discussion? None, any public comment?
Councilmember Carroll, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Fike?
Aye.
Councilmember Radzick?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
Aye.
Mayor Keough?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. Groveland Property Investment LLC requests for a temporary waiver of the code violations at twenty-three-three-nine U.S. Highway twenty-seven and twenty-three-four-nine U.S. Highway twenty-seven.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for allowing us to place this on the agenda tonight. As you can see in your packet, Groveland Property Investment LLC, some of you may know it as the Milestone Hills Apartments Project, has requested a temporary waiver of the code violations associated with the two properties under their control. Representatives of the development are here this evening and would like to give a presentation to update the council as to the status and clarify and explain their request for the temporary waiver.
Good. Can we have the representatives come forward, please? State your name and address, please.
My name is Martin Ugarte. I'm here in behalf of Groveland Property Investment. Thank you for having me. I wrote down a couple of things in order not to forget, and we prepared a presentation. We have this project for a long time already. We bought this property back in December twenty eighteen. It's been a long time since our first meeting, and I always tell the story that it was very impressive to get to the city of Groveland and have our first meeting with the staff. And Mike, you know, I always tell the same story. After the presentation, Mike looked at me and he told me, I only have one question for you. What does the city can do for you? So I wasn't used to this. I was very surprised and pleased. We started working in the in the project. We purchased this property. This was three folios. One was not incorporated, one was incorporated to the city of Groveland, and the other two were unincorporated in Lake County. So we started the process with the annexation. Yeah, it took a while. We got the annexation back in November twenty nineteen. So it took almost one year. Then after, after the annexation, we did the site plan presentation, also with change of use and rezoning request. This was in March twenty twenty. In August twenty twenty, there was a city ordinance approving the comprehensive plan amendment. So we decided to go to the city and leave aside all the work that we were doing. And we did have this comprehensive plan that was subject to a state approval. Then COVID came. It took a lot of time. So our site plan approved approval was back in April twenty twenty-one. And we started working with all the architects, engineering, and everything to have the permits. And we got them in April twenty twenty-two. So it took us three years and four months to get the permits. Yeah, that was a long time, a lot of effort, a lot of resources. But we got there. And when we got there, the market was totally different, totally different. The rates went up, the construction cost, it went up. Our budget at the moment when we started the project was twelve million, and nowadays is over eighteen. So a lot, a lot higher. Besides that, the financing of a construction, getting a construction loan was too difficult, and the rates were really high. So that was a very challenging moment. We had options. One of the options was just selling the property for another purpose to another group that has more backup or whatever, or sticking with the project. We decided to stick with the project. We prepared a presentation just to walk you through what we have in our mind for that property. So I guess I have to press here, right here. So we bought two hotels. These were two not operating hotels with three hundred and eighty-eight hotel rooms. And we planned and got the site plan approval for two hundred and fourteen apartments. Those two hundred and fourteen apartments were our ninety-six studios, sixty-two one bedrooms, and fifty-six two bedrooms. What we're doing is actually pretty simple. We are keeping the whole structure, this concrete block. And what we're doing is getting together two hotel rooms to make a one-bedroom apartment, three hotel rooms to make two-bedrooms apartment. The challenge is we have to get a new roof, we have to get new plumbing, new electric, new side work. Everything is new. The only thing that we're keeping is the structure. So that's why it's a big investment. I'm going to show you a little bit our idea. This is what I just told you. This is the site plan that was approved. These are the two properties. We did also a lot split, and we separated the gas station from our property. And then afterwards, what we did is a unification of the lots. So now it's just one lot. These are the models for the studios. We, our goal is to create a place, comfortable place, reasonable price, and aiming to a price that is a market price. Yeah, we are not going, we were in conversations at the moment with Tracy Garcia in the Lake County Economic Prosperity, and we had the chance of going through a path of affordable housing. We decided not to do that. We didn't want to have that label. So this is market price. And for that, we have to have all the commodities and accommodations for the rentals. This is a one-bedroom, so we are just putting together two hotel rooms. And this is the two-bedroom, two-bath. Basically, this is a split plan where you have in the middle, one of the hotel rooms, we're changing the bathroom for the kitchen. And on the other two sides, we already have the bathrooms on the back. So the labor, I'm not going to tell you it's easy, but it's not complicated. It's a, it's a job that can take us, we have the two properties, the one on the top, it can take us ten months just to have it ready and to start the process of leasing. We worked with the city staff, and we decided to have permits by building. We have seven buildings. One of the buildings is the amenity buildings, where we're going to have, let me show you some of the ideas. Of course, playground for kids. We want to create a community, a place where people can relate, and they can, they can spend there not just for sleep and also to socialize. So we are going to prepare a coworking space. We're going to have a space for kids, playground. Of course, we know this has a very important impact in the city. One of the first things that I remember a long time ago was when we didn't know that Kroger was coming, we knew that it was a very big company that was coming. And one of the things that was important for them is housing. So we know there's a lack of housing and this type of apartments, and that's what we're aiming, trying to bring this to the market. Of course, it's going to generate jobs. Of course, it's going to generate taxes, revenue for the city and all those impacts. But again, we, we want to, we had the chance at the moment to do something different, and, but we stick with the property, and we kept working. Here, we got to a situation where we got some liens because of the, of the property and how it was and the graffitis, and there was vandalism. There happens a lot of things, seven years is a lot, and happened a lot of things. So we got some liens, and we, we decided to take the things in our hands and work on that. Financially, it's not an easy task. We invested around three hundred thousand dollars just to have it now in conditions. Mark is going to help me now explaining a little bit what we did. But basically, we got a loan on the property in order to be able to pay those, those fees and things. And we, the lender is a private lender, and we had at the moment four liens. And three of them, they were cured. One is still there, and it's going to be there until we do the construction. So there's no way we can arrange or make it better if we don't start the construction. And so that loan that we got got us enough to pay some of the vendors, enough to do some of the things, but not to get to the point where we get, we need to get, that is to the construction loan. So I'm here to request two things. One is a temporary waiver of that lien in order to get the resources to get to the point where we can get the construction loan. And the other second thing is, we used to have an economic development agreement that helped us a lot, was part of the negotiations. It was up and running until, if I'm not mistaken, June twenty twenty-four. I met with some of the councils, I met with a, with a city manager, and I explained to them, getting the financing wasn't easy. I can't tell you how many doors we have knocked. And we are in a position today where we're negotiating a loan. The loan is for twenty-three and a quarter million. And it's one of the things that we had to do, me as a principal, is almost give away all my equity. But I'm still here, guarantee all the, I'm giving personal guarantees for the project. We did a joint venture with a company called IMF. IMF is doing this type of conversions and have done a lot, is now doing one in Kissimmee, very similar to this one. And they decided to back us up, and they're giving their personal guarantees for the loan. So we are, we had our last meeting today, this morning, with the lender, and we're negotiating, we're negotiating the last terms. And one of the terms is the one that affects us more is they're requesting to get those twenty-three and a quarter million construction loan, that we bring two more million to the table. So of course, today is very difficult, and we're trying to lower that. And that's why it's so important for us to have the development agreement approved again, okay? The development agreement gave us a couple of things. One of the things that gave us was some permits and impact fees waivers, but also the, like, patience on waiting to have the property in conditions, yeah? So in terms of those four liens, we have the property in a very, very bad condition. A lot of vandalism, there were people that robbed our cover, the graffitis. And so we, we got the help from Mark. He's going to explain you a little bit what the process was with the city and what we did. Mark?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and council members. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Mark Loakino. I'm with LML Partners, and we also work with Groveland Property Investments. We've been working with them since twenty twenty-one on this project is when we came on board. So I'm going to give you the down and dirty on what we did. So as you know, the property was looking a little bit rough, to say the very least. So back in March of this year, my partner Lori and I, we reached out to some of the folks here at the city, and we scheduled a site meeting. We went through basically and talked about the things that we needed to do to make this safe, first of all, safe and secure for the city, and secondly, to make it more appealing aesthetically. And so the things that we identified were to, obviously for the security of it, was to repair all of the fences, make sure that everything was in good condition so that we could keep people out. We needed to make sure that all of the rooms were secure so that, as we know, being on this project as long as we've been on it, we know there's been squatters in there, we know that we've had transients living in there, we know a lot of those things. And my wife and I actually used to live right down the road in Howie in the Hills. So we were here back in twenty-ten, so we know the history of, of these buildings. To look at, what does it take to make them look better, at least for now? We know that, you know, we're not, we, obviously, we didn't rebuild them. But what we wanted to do is we wanted to make it more pleasing and safer. And so we needed to deal with landscape issues, we needed to deal with the graffiti. So what we did is we came up with a list of items with the city, basically a scope of work. And then they seemed to be okay with that, and so we pressed forward with it. We started in the second week of March, and we had accomplished the cleanup and securment of the project within about thirty days. So, and I know we've had conversations with the, and I guess I can go through pictures here, just the arrow button, other way. So there is graffiti and open rooms, everything, I don't know if, I'm sure you all drive by it at one time or another. But it's all been, all of the rooms have been boarded up, all of the trash was cleaned up, all of the landscaping, we trimmed the trees, we cut the grass, we cleaned the parking lots. Some of the folks out there decided it was cheaper dump fees to dump down in those parking lots than it was to take it to the dump. So we had a lot of trash to clean up. All of that has been done. So you can see, we've repainted the entire complex. It's not beautiful, but it looks much better than it did before. What our ongoing efforts are, is our ongoing efforts, we, obviously, we came into this and we said, okay, we want to get it cleaned up. But now what we need to do, while the rest of the team is working on getting financing for this project to keep going, what we need to do is now we need to maintain it. So we have, we do make monthly checks up here to make sure that everything is still safe and secure. If there's anything that's not safe and secure, we take care of it. And we have, we have engaged a local landscape company to go ahead and do all of the mowing. We did the main pool, actually, both pools are completely fenced and locked and drained, and we're making sure that they stay drained because obviously that is, was a big safety concern for us. So I say, all of the parking lots have been cleaned, all of the buildings have been painted. You can't get up to the second story of any of the buildings anymore. We've blocked off all of the corridors and stairways so that you're not allowed to get up there anymore. And there's a, there's a picture showing. And there's a, there's a picture showing the color of them now. So we've gotten rid of all the graffiti. Everything's been closed up. So just, I guess in closing, um, I just wanna make sure that the, the council knows that we didn't just, this is not just a one-time effort. This is gonna be an ongoing effort until the construction actually starts. Uh, but we will make sure that it's secure and it's, it's safe for the, not only the, you know, the city itself, but for the folks who live around it. Um, I know we've talked to several of the uh, the law enforcement officers and they're thrilled. We have installed some lighting out there. Uh, we are in the process of installing a camera so that we can, can monitor what's happening. And um, again, this, these efforts will be ongoing um, until the construction starts, at which time then it becomes a, a construction area and, and the rules change then.
Thank you. A quick, um, can I start? So a, a quick closing. Um, we know, we, we know this project, we want this project, we want to make it, we want to have it done. We know this benefit for the, for the city, for the uh, people, that it's gonna generate jobs. We um, we want to ask you for your support. I know that after seven years, now that I've told you all what we went through, probably you understand more uh, what we have been through uh, if, as a developers. So what we are asking here is for final support. We want to make this, we're negotiating with the lender. We uh, we need the last push, just, just that. Um, thank you very much for, for hearing us and if you have any question, we're here.
Okay, thank you. Um, and we'll go around, we'll start with Ms. Fike and then uh, come to you, uh, Mr. Radzik. But can somebody explain to me, I'm a little slow, what a waiver, what does the waiver mean? What are we doing with a waiver?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think that's one thing the applicant could clarify if they're asking for a release of lien or if it's a condition of the financing, unless Sandy had something to illuminate us with.
Mayor, I, I had the same question when I looked at the agenda item, the, you know, the lien, it becomes a lien on the property and it's there. So initially, I thought it was a waiver of future liens accruing. But listening, it sounds like they're asking for a release of it or at least a subordination of it to their financing, but I, I can't tell from the, the documents.
Can you explain to us?
I, I'm gonna explain uh, without the legal knowledge, but we have, we had four liens. The three of them were cure, cured. One is, for example, the structure of the, of the property, the roof, the, behind those plywood's, there's windows broken. We can't replace those windows now. They're gonna be replaced when we do the full construction. So we have two situations. One is the actual loan that we have, we're not able to get the rest or remaining of the loan because we have this lien. And this lien is not gonna be cured until we have the construction. So in order to get to the construction, we need the resources. Basically, is that. How legally we structure it, I don't know. The economic development agreement had that in place, if I'm not mistaken, uh, that any lien, any situation, any uh, not uh, good conditions of the property was waived until we start the construction. It delayed, but uh, what we are trying is to reestablish that. So uh, have at least eight months in order to uh, be ready and get the construction loan without that lien. I don't know if it is a waiver, if it is a, a, another word, I don't know. But what we need is that lien not being in place in order to move forward with financing.
Well, I'm gonna start giving it to, for questions, but if you don't know what you're asking for, we don't know what, uh, what we're voting on and we need exactly what you, I mean, we'll go around and get some questions done, but unless you're very clear to the where this man right down here, our attorney, can understand exactly what you're asking for and it translate to us, then um, I don't think that we can move on it, but go ahead, Ms. Fike.
Wait, if, if I'm not explaining myself, let me, let me try to do that again. There's a lien in the property because of the roof are not in good conditions. There's a lien in the property because the structure is not in good conditions. There's a lien in the property because the windows are broken. There's a lien in the property because the property is not in good condition. And it's not gonna be in good conditions until we have the construction loan and we can invest the twenty-something million dollars in the property and make it a reality. So those things can be cured. And now the city has established a lien. A lien is making us not able to get the financing.
A lien for the fines, right? That you?
It's, I think, I, I don't, we don't, we're not here to get a reduction of the fine. The fine is something around sixty thousand dollars today, sixty-two thousand. That is not gonna change our project, we're talking about other different numbers. What we are doing here is asking you to put that lien aside for an next amount of time. How you, I perfectly know what I need, I need that lien to disappear. How? I don't know. The property is not gonna be in good conditions, so, and you know it. So it's not gonna be in good conditions until we get the construction loan. So if, if you want me to explain you what I want, I want that lien to disappear.
Thank you. Ms. Fike?
I don't know if I'm less confused or more confused. So um, there's a sixty thousand dollar fine. First off, this might be a question for Tim Maslow, I'm not sure who's gonna ans- answer it, but I'm gonna ask the question. How were the first three liens cured? Sorry, Tim.
Thank you, Catwoman.
Bring you into the party.
Well, just to um, address that, there, there's technically two liens, um, two, on both of the buildings. There were four code compliance violations. Three have been cured to the applicant's point. Uh, investing mostly in the exterior, cleaning up the debris, uh, landscape cleanup, um, graffiti removal. But right now, the outstanding code viol- violation is still on the structures, the exterior walls, the, the roofs, uh, based on pictures that we've seen, the interiors. Neglecting shape, neglecting shape.
So I, I don't even know how to pose this question, but I'm gonna try my best. You have the windows boarded over, but you need to be able to do construction to put glass windows. You need the lien removed to, to be able to move forward with any repairs on the building whatsoever. Roof, broken windows, et cetera. So the boarding up of the windows doesn't help cure that for you to move forward. And I'm not sure who's gonna answer this question, whether it's you, Tim, or not, because this is kind of confusing for me, I've got more notes than I know what to do with. Let me roll back a second, let me, let me go where my head first started. You've had this property since two thousand eighteen and it wasn't until the lien became an issue that you decided to go and start the cleanup on it earlier this year, is that correct? When did you, I drive by it all the time, it just got painted in April and I'm looking at the picture.
Oh, no, painting, yes, of course, we didn't paint it before. It was, it was maintained, uh, but it got deteriorated. Uh, we didn't, we, we tried not to uh, invest money in a way that is not uh, be the, the best way to optimize our resources. I understand, it got to a point where the property was in not good conditions. Part of it was uh, from the previous owner and part was, was from us. I, I'm not avoiding that.
No, I, I don't think so, I'm looking at photos here that I have, I don't think they were on here. Maybe they were from two thou- uh, from February of twenty twenty-five where it's an absolute mess. I don't know when you did the, the painting on it. Um, I can probably find it here. I guess my question is, I, there were a lot of, thank you, a lot of city resources that were used. I, I know our police department responded there frequently for a lot of the issues and so on. And I don't know at what point that the pin got stuck, stuck in this, that the cleanup, again, I'm looking back at February of twenty twenty-five, it's a picture of the restaurant and lounge and the mess, mess outside of that, the inside and so on, that it looks that, as though some attention was finally paid to it. Did you all decide to start doing it right then and there because the lien became an issue? Is that finally when you said, hey, we need to cure this lien? And that's when you went in, when you had time before that? I mean, what became the critical measure of like, we need to do this? I'm still, not clear, but maybe you can help me.
We decided to invest three hundred thousand dollars uh, that we didn't have. We took a loan in order to put the property in conditions once we got the lien. Uh, basically, what we did is try to optimize our resources. So if you ask me why we didn't do it before, it was because that, we were trying to optimize our resources. When we got the lien, yes, of course, we didn't have any other option. And to tell you the truth, it helped a lot. Helped a lot because we, we were able to have the property in these conditions and the lender was here on June second and didn't see uh, Ghost, Ghost House or what the property was before. They saw what the property is now. So it helped a lot, a lot, a lot. But we did it once we got the lien, yes.
So if, if we decide tonight that, to remove the lien, not saying that we will, I think there's a lot more questions and I'll probably have some follow-up. There's a twenty-three-plus-million-dollar construction loan that you can take advantage of to bring this property into the beautiful studios, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, et cetera. At what point is that loan then provided to you?
We are negotiating terms. Um, I shared some of the terms with Mike Haines uh, last week. Uh, we had the meeting with the lender today, this morning, nine-thirty AM. They're asking for a very uh, high terms, thirteen percent rate, two per, two points at the beginning, one point at the exit, so that takes you to sixteen. That's tough, so we're negotiating those terms. The lender is going to a committee ne- uh, Wednesday next week and we were told that we can modify some of the terms, but um, we are very near to get the approval. If we have to pay the thirteen percent, we're gonna pay it. Usually, usually the term to get this approval, once it passed the committee on next, not next Wednesday, the, the Wednesday next week, is around sixty days.
Okay, I'm gonna hold some questions because I know that, I, I know Mike is chomping at the bit to talk, but I, I will reserve some questions to come back, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm, been part of this from the beginning.
Yes.
And there is representations that were made that didn't quite come to fruition. Economic development or incentives that we held that we weren't able to use for anybody else for a period of time, which wasn't fair to people up north. Um, and excuse my directness, but there's no other way of being direct. I am trying to apply for a home equity loan and do you know what they want me to do? They want the lien that sell, that, that, that I've got on my house right now for a second mortgage, they want that paid off first. So is the bank looking for you to get those liens removed as a condition of getting approved for that twenty-three million dollars?
No, not the bank.
So no one, no one is requiring to extinguish those liens in order to move forward the construction loan?
No, wh- what we have is two stages. We have a private lender that gave us eight hundred thousand dollars uh, loan and there's a remaining, if I'm not mistaken, it's around two hundred thousand uh, that's not being released. And the, that lender is asking us for the uh, release in order to, uh, sorry, for taking a waiver of the, of the lien in order to release the two hundred thousand dollars. The lender for, it's a totally different lender, it's a company, a big company that's gonna lend us the twenty-three and a quarter million and uh, they haven't said anything. That, I mean, one, once you have the construction loan, they know that the roof is not in good conditions, so it's not a requirement from this lender.
So if there's no requirement, why do you come in here, asking us to basically waive a lien for sixty days, sixty months, whatever? Why do you need it removed if there's no conditions on the loan being approved or otherwise?
We, we have uh, two loans. One loan, it was eight hundred thousand and we got six hundred, more or less. And there's two hundred thousand that is being retained because of this lien. Those two hundred thousand will help us pay the vendors to keep the property in good conditions, pay to uh, uh, what we need to pay in order to do the underwriting with the lender. Just the underwriting with the lender is fifty thousand. So we need those resources, that's what we, I split into what we're requesting. One of the things is this, to get the two hundred thousand.
So there is a requirement of the liens being extinguished in order to get the extra two hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, exactly.
We finally, we finally got to that, fine. I don't need to ask about what exactly do you mean by a temporary waiver because we know what it is that you're looking for. We talked about the economic development. I will tell you that when I first saw this project many years ago, um, that was when Kroger was coming to town and you gave a great dog and pony show, just like you did here. Um, Mr. Maslow, are there any outstanding code violations as of right now?
Yes, uh, on the structures.
On the structures, so um, and that is currently, has a lien on it?
Correct.
Okay. I got some serious issues with wanting to waive um, liens or extinguish them. Sandy, how do you extinguish a lien? I mean, I don't know about you, but you don't look like Houdini. So I don't know if you just go like this and there goes, you know, the lien.
Well, well typically, uh, my experience in the code enforcement, sometimes governments will waive the liens once the property is brought completely into compliance. Um, I've never seen one where they waived it where there was still a violation. And um, even if you were to wipe out the sixty-five thousand, sixty-six thousand dollars of liens now, it's gonna continue to accrue at a hundred dollars a day at each site because the buildings are in violation. And so it'd be very unusual to release them before complete compliance was done. And in terms of the construction loan, the liens could be paid at the closing of the construction loan. A hundred thousand dollars of twenty-three million seems like it'd be a rounding error pretty much. Now hearing this other loan of trying to get the money, so in essence, if you did, if you did agree to subordinate your lien to this eight hundred thousand dollar loan, you'd be putting them first. And then if they foreclose that loan, you would never get your, your.
I understand the challenges, I know that you were looking for financing, I know that you were looking for partners. It sounds like you got some of that resolved. Um, but uh, I'm going to stop with my comments because they are um, not sitting too well.
Thank you. Can I, can I add something? When we bought the property, uh, Tim, you weren't here, uh, but Mike, did the property had violations? It had. And we bought the property and we got the economic development agreement. So it wa- it happened, I understand, has been seven years, been a long time. We're here, one of the things that the lender is impressed of is that we're, we kept the property. That's one of the things that they said. And I think is amazing, for me, I, I invested a lot of money in this project, a lot, from my pocket. And I, now I have this much of equity because I want this done. So I understand, uh, Mike, we, I have represented uh, this project a long time ago. But we're here, we didn't go and we are trying to make it happen. And it, it's not easy, but at the moment when we bought the property, the, I, there were violations.
Let me put it into a budget perspective if I can. Tim, how much was the economic incentives for, do you remember?
It was north of four hundred thousand dollars.
Four hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
How much?
Four hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
So we'll, we'll say five hundred thousand as a round number. So we've been carrying that in our budget. We weren't able to use that for a period of time in order to balance our budget, use for fire equipment or otherwise. And this has been going on for so many years. So I'm looking at it not only um, trying to politically correct. So I'm looking at it, not only trying to politically correct, which is not my strong suit, but broken promises at the extent of my residents not being able to see sidewalks fixed or not being able to have money to go ahead for my new ladder truck. So, I mean, I'm looking at this trying to, you know, feel better about it. And there's nothing that I'm going to feel better about. So, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll.
So you said, even if we were to waive the lien, which they're there right now, even if that were to happen, you said you still need $2 million to get the other loan secured?
Yes. Those $2 million is cash to close. When you have a loan, when you get a loan for construction, there's a source and uses. When you get to the final line, there's the cash to close. Today, we have two million, a little bit over two million to bring to the table in order to close.
Okay, you made it sound like you still had to gather that. And I wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. So you said you had a loan for 800,000, 600,000 was released to you. You said you spent 300,000 on the property. Where did the other 300,000 go?
Paid something around 300 in taxes, property taxes.
Back taxes, okay.
Yeah.
Is the building even salvageable at this point?
Sorry.
Is the structure even salvageable at this point or?
This concrete block, it's not going to go.
Yeah. So just for my credentials, we're a licensed general contractor in the state of Florida. We're also a licensed roofing contractor. So the, the upper buildings, the north buildings are concrete block with, with cast decks, both floors and roof. The, the lower building, and they're completely sound. They are completely sound and salvageable. The lower ones are also sound and salvageable, but they have, the floors are bar joists with lightweight and the roofs are bar joists with lightweight, corrugated decks with lightweight. And so we have a little bit more work to do in that, but all of it is salvageable. What we did is we put lipstick on it. I mean, quite honestly, we put lipstick on it, but we wanted to make it safe. And that was the important thing was to make it safe for the people. From a construction perspective, the project is very viable. We're, you know, I've been in this business for 40 years. We've been working with Martin and Santiago since 2021. And I would still be working on this if I didn't believe in this project. So, you know, we, we believe strongly in it. It is a good project. And we feel it's, it's, it's going to be good for the city of Groveland, too. It's just been a little bit challenging, but as far as the integrity of the buildings, the integrity is there.
Okay.
Okay.
And then you also asked about impact fee waivers. And I'm just going to go out, we've been discussing impact fees a lot lately. And with the way our loan set up for our new water feature, we are in no position to waive any impact fees for that. So I'm just going to throw that out there. I don't think that that would be a viable option for us. I'm going to pause. Go ahead, Barbara.
Can I address the impact fee situation? We have the main impact fee for our project is a school impact fee. The rest, we have credits because the property was there. So road credits, park credits, I think that libraries not, we don't have credit because it was at a hotel, but there are a lot of credits that we can get. And, and the impact fee, just school impact fee is over 1.2 million. Yeah? And the city impact fees, I think is no more than 200,000, something like that. I have to check, but it's not something too considerable if you take in consideration the school impact fees. But yes, everything helps. You asked me about the 2 million that we bring to cash to close. Yes, today is difficult. It's not easy to put those 2 millions more because we have already invested 8 millions in this property, eight. I understand the frustration, but I have that frustration too. And I put money from my pocket a lot. And whatever we can do in order to reduce the 2 million that we have to bring to the table is going to help. Even if it's $100,000 or if it is 50 or whatever, it's going to be less amount of money that we have to bring to the table. It's going to facilitate the possibility to close the loan. Okay?
First, I'm going to make a statement, then I'm going to ask some questions. I am sorely disappointed that this is not affordable housing. If anything, the city of Groveland needs its more affordable housing. With that being said, I thought that I heard you say that originally it was 12 million dollars and now that has increased to 18 million dollars. Is that correct? Okay. And that you acquired this in 2018. And it also took you three months, three years and four months to get permits. During the time that these three years and four months, was any of that time in your court? Because the way that I'm hearing it, it's, it appears to be all on the city. So can you tell me if in those three years and four months, was any of that delay in your court?
Yes, of course. But also on the city side.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Both, both sides, both, our side and the city, both, just with a comprehensive plan, we lost 10 months, just with that. So yes, it affected. And the approval of those comprehensive plan was supposed to be in three months. That's what we jumped in and it took more than 10. And the approval wasn't there because of COVID. Of course, it affected. That was not the priority, not for the state, not for the city, not for everyone. So yes, we were affected. I'm not here with a finger pointing to the city, totally the opposite. I'm saying we are in this situation. This is the situation. Of course, I would have, I'd rather not having to be in this situation today because it's cost me a lot of money. And of course, it affected the economics of the city. I understand what the counsel, Mike, is saying, but we are here and the situation is this. If we have to take a picture, this is the situation. So what I'm bringing here is with an open book, this is my situation. This is what I need in order to achieve something that I know is going to be very good for everyone. I understand frustrations. I understand some type of prejudice that the city has had. We had to expose eyes, but nothing is going to, again, I'm not pointing with a finger. I'm here saying this is where we are and this is what we need.
And sir, to be very clear, just, just so you understand, I am not pointing fingers either. I am merely here to get an enhanced understanding because I don't believe that I was on the council when this happened. So I am not pointing fingers. I'm here to get an enhanced understanding of what is going on. My last question is, it was 12 million, now it's 18 million. And as I understand it, you are now seeking a 23.7 million dollar loan. Is that correct?
23 and a quarter.
Okay, yes, 23 and a quarter loan. And if things cost 18 million now, what's the plan for the extra money?
The loan has interest a lot, 13%, 2% just from, for the origination fee. We have 1.3% for the broker's fee. We have interest reserves and the loan is for 24 months with two possible extensions of six months each, 1% each one, the right to have one of those or two of those extensions, we have to pay 1% each. So there's a lot of interest involved.
What is your guarantee to the city about, once you acquire this loan, everyone wants to know the whiff them, what's in it for me? So I'm asking on behalf of the city council, whiff them, what's in it for us? You get this loan, what, what guarantee do we have that you're asking for, I believe, an eight month, eight month extension? What guarantee do we have that this will be up and running in eight months?
I can't give you guarantees. If I don't get the loan, I run out of options and we're going to have this property and we're going to have to demolish into something else. I already invested 8 millions. I'm fighting for that. I have 8 millions invested. I'm going to fight for it. I could have sold this property back three years ago. I didn't because I want the project. Do I, can I give you guarantees of this? No. I met, it was 2023 when I came and met with Mike at the offices and I, we had a loan approved for 9 million and we had to bring 6 million to the table, remember? So raising 6 million on top of eight was very difficult. Now we're in a very much better position. We are with the lender, I think is my last option, to get this loan approved and get this done. So what I can give you is my guarantee that if we don't get this loan, the property is not going to be what we are dreaming and it's going to be sold for whatever.
Understood, but then what happens in eight more months? If it's not completed, then, then do you come back for eight more months?
No.
What happens?
This is my last option. I've been fighting and trying to get the loan for a long time, even much more time than 2023. I, I explain you the whole process that took us with, back in April 22, we got the permits approval. Back in April 22, we started the bidding process. So what our project at that moment was for 12 million. When we started the bidding process, it was amazing what happened. I think that everyone is aware that what pandemic gave us, the prices were up crazy. Today, that project is 18 and a quarter, the construction cost, and it was something around 12. So yes, we were affected. The only guarantee I can give you is that this is my last fight. If I don't achieve this loan, I run out of options. But I'm going to lose a lot of money? Yes. But I have to be realistic. If we couldn't achieve it in this time, then we're not fit to it probably, or the project is not worth it or any. We, we tried everything. It's not that, I understand that taking care of the, the property from a point of view of the city is something that must be done. From our point was what far we have to stop and choose between. Now we have the opportunity. We really have it. We have a lender. I don't mind sharing with the council, the term sheet we have. We don't have much time to get the approval. It's going to be not next Wednesday, Wednesday of next week. So it's going to be pretty fast. If we don't get the loan, you're going to see a sign. That's it.
I understand.
That's a personal situation, right?
Yeah.
But I'm fighting here.
Not to be rude, but it is personal.
Yes, of course.
I also, I can empathize with you, but we are also responsible to the residents of the city of Groveland. And we have to look out for the city of Groveland residents. So with that, I am going to turn it over to the mayor.
Let me just, because I've got, just help me out with the figures here. You've got 23 million and 0.25 million that you're borrowing. You've got 8 million in it already, right?
Yes.
So you're up to 31.5 million. You have an 800,000 and a 200,000 dollar loan down here that the 200,000 you need to get to get the waiver to get the 200,000 released. Did I get that wrong, the 800,000?
The 200 is part of the 800.
Okay, so 800,000. So we're up to, help me out here, Mr. Bookkeeper. I think we're up to like.
32 and a half.
32 and a half million. And you have how many units?
214 units.
14, is that model going to work for you?
Of course.
That works out to about $3 million in rent every year. You're $3 million in rent every year at market price approximately right now with quick math. That's not taking out any maintenance or employees or any of that.
$3 million a year for what now?
Oh, our NOI projected is 2.5.
And you got a 13% interest rate.
13% is a construction loan. Once you finish the construction loan, you refi and you lower the rate because you are stabilized and you have two options, either refi or sell.
I love passionate people. I love passionate entrepreneurs, but I don't, I'm the side for the city to invest in it and I'll just be that honest with you.
So one important thing has not been addressed. Precedent. Precedent when it comes to code violations. Too many times in the past, I've argued, no, I can't waive those fines because it would set a precedent. Now you're asking me to be again, Houdini and making these liens go away and I'm going to set a precedent. That's not good for us to be able to basically have options for people to comply with what our code is. Number two, you made a comment earlier that our comp plan affected or the, you know, the comp plan being negotiated affected your project when in fact, you didn't have the financing back then anyway. So the city didn't affect you because of the comp plan. You didn't have the money and I know that because I was with you talking about it. So I, I take a little bit of offense to being told that the comp plan affected your plan. And, and I'm just probably going to stop at that, but my biggest issue again is consistency of our code enforcement and what we have in order to make sure that it's complied with.
I, I understand. The, the city comprehensive plan was in 2020. We presented the site plan in 2021, we got.
You didn't have the money. You didn't have the financing. You, you needed nine.
You can't get the financing once you get the final approval and the permits. There's no way you can get financing after that. So I'm, I'm not.
Okay, that's, I'm not going to argue with you.
No, no, but I'm not, I'm not trying to blame and I'm not trying to, we were affected, but we were affected because the economics changed. The pandemic affected, the pandemic affected you, affected me, affected everyone. So one of the things that affected is the approval of the comprehensive plan, but I'm not blaming the city about it. It was totally reasonable that the interest of the city, the state was something different than, than the comprehensive plan. It was trying to help people with, with the pandemic. I understand, but it affected us. But I'm not blaming the city because of that. I'm not trying to get any benefit because of that. I'm just trying to, the question, what, what does the city get from this? 214 apartments, a lot of jobs, a nicer property. And I understand you can decide either invest or not invest. That, I can present you and open the book and show you our, our shoes, how we are standing and how we are in this situation. But again, you our shoes, how we are standing and how we are in this situation. But again, I understand that you're making precedent. It was already made with the economic development agreement, but it is what it is.
Just real quick, and Barbara, thank you for bringing up the affordable housing piece because I wrote here a question, are there any affordable units or affordable housing units? And as you were explaining, I had a question mark here, and then you said there was something that prevented some of that from being affordable housing units. Could you reel back to that and just explain that to me because it went by so quickly? All I wrote was none.
Yes, of course. That was a conversation that I had with Tracy Garcia. She was the director of Economic Prosperity Lake County at the moment. She offered us to get some, a lot of benefits if we go through affordable housing. We decided at a moment, it was a business decision not to go for affordable housing because we didn't want to have the label of affordable housing, even though the rents that we are calculating are in the same as affordable housing, probably in some are lower. So the only thing that we didn't want was the label. Yep, but the rents, we weren't, we, our rents weren't higher than if you look at the Lake County affordable housing rents, it's going to be in the same range.
But the entire development didn't have to be affordable housing. Was it a percentage of the units that would have to be affordable housing?
I have, I don't have the entire knowledge about it, but I know that once you are, have the, you are doing an affordable housing, you have to keep the rents in some sort of, what the Lake County is establishing for around 80% of the units and the rest, I think you can, but I'm, I'm not, I don't have the knowledge, but yes, we do.
So you found that to be untenable and decided to abandon the idea of affordable housing?
Not, not because we wanted to have a higher amount of rent, because we didn't want to have the label. The label might, it's, I mean, you can think totally different, but if I want to leave in a place, I prefer not saying affordable housing, me, but it is, the rents are going to be the same. It's not that we are going to be renting a higher price. That's the only thing.
Okay, just a couple of final questions. Looking, looking towards the future, you said if you got your $23 million plus loan, you would be 10 months to start to leasing and you've just had a long discussion about how COVID impacted everything and you had delays and so on. It's construction, that 10 months is either, either it's six months and you're stretching to 10 or it's 10 and it's going to stretch anyway. But just a comment, you don't, I don't expect a response. Would you start leasing those units prior to the pools being complete and all the amenities that would be affordable, I mean, available to your tenants?
Well, we, we have the two properties. I say two is all one. The one that is higher has a building that is for the amenity building, has a swimming pool. The other one is going to be eliminated. And we got the building permits by building. So our plan is to start with a higher property, amenity buildings, swimming pool, and there's each one of the buildings on top, they're free, and we want to start with those and start leasing and then moving forward to the rest.
So if I'm the first person to move in, that pool will, will be available to me the moment I lease?
Yes, totally. We're now going to start without the amenities.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Can you explain to me, I heard you say the label of affordable housing. Can you explain to me what affordable housing is?
I understand there's a program that made for developers, probably the developers, what they do, they gain a lot of benefits. I, I think I'm being misinterpreted because we, we know that there are a lot of benefits as a developer to do affordable housing. We didn't want to delay the process. We didn't want to start with that process. We are not developers that are familiar with affordable housing. I know there are a lot that they are familiar. We weren't. And we weren't seeking to, to have rental rates on top of the affordable housing. So why going through that process? The only way, I mean, the only thing that could benefit us to go through that process of affordable is to get benefits, but it would have, without the whole picture today, it would have delayed us because of the applications to do affordable housing, as well as, I remember we had meetings in order to get the pace loan. I don't know if you're familiar with the pace loan. It's a loan that you can add to the construction loan and you get better rates, but the city has to approve it and has to be involved in and we didn't go through that path either. So the, the only thing that made us decide not to go for affordable housing was timing.
So when you say affordable housing, are you talking Section 8?
No. Affordable housing is, there's, I'm not familiar with it, but affordable housing has programs, different programs. Section 8, if we finish this, we can take Section 8. We can, we can even do a master lease and do all Section 8. It's not limiting that. Affordable housing is a program where you get benefits as a developer, but you have to comply to keep rates at certain level for X amount of time. So that, that's what I know of affordable housing is, but, but it's not that there are developers that aren't used to that. We're not.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to bring this to a close because I need five minutes before you go to ask you if you have anything on these next two subjects, okay? So, but I need, I need, first I need a motion. Do we have a motion to accept the, what is it, the 20? Do we have a motion to accept Groveland Property Investments' request to temporarily waiver the code violations?
That, that's not even what they're asking for. They're asking not to waive the code violations. They want us to waive the liens. They want the liens to go away. So that title is not really correct. Is that right, Sandy?
That's what it sounds like after listening to the discussion, yes.
So do I have a motion? Seeing no motion, the, the motion doesn't carry, so.
Thank you very much for having us. Thank you.
Okay, item two. Mr. Radzik, you want to look at the agenda and just, in full transparency to see if there's anything that you want us to bring up on those next two? Because I know you got to get out of here tonight.
Whatnot, right? It's nothing more than just administrative type of an item?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the item two and item three are presentations in conjunction with either outside funding or an outside agreement that we've had in some place. You're correct.
Okay, all right. Thanks for asking. Thanks. Okay, so let's move on to item two, consideration of approval of Resolution 2025-34, approving the city of Groveland Comprehensive Vulnerability Assessment and Adaptation Plan dated March 2025 pursuant to the Resilient Florida Program Planning Grant DEP Agreement 23 PLN 20. Mr. Maslow, is this, oh, is this you? I'm sorry.
This time I'm prepared, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This has been a team effort. We have Deputy Chief Thiemann earlier talking about hurricane preparation and storms. And I recall a question about what's our biggest vulnerability? Is it wind or water? Well, in the case of the Comprehensive Vulnerability Assessment and Adaptation Plan that's going to be presented tonight before you, it's been led with Brenda Toscano and myself, working with Woodard and Curran. This is going to focus on the flooding issues that potentially exist in the Groveland area and Amanda Boone with Woodard and Curran is here to present the information. It is a prerequisite to being able to secure both grant funding or potential DEP loan funding depending on the program. So with that, I'm going to ask Amanda to come up and walk us through the prerequisite planning that's already occurred and she will be seeking your approval of the resolution to make this plan formal and filed with DEP. Amanda Boone.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council members. I'm going to walk you through what we have done with this vulnerability assessment and some of the findings from that plan. So first of all, this is a assessment that was done through the Resilient Florida Program. And what we've done is assess the vulnerability of your critical infrastructure and the risk to flooding and sea level rise. Sea level rise doesn't affect you, but that is one of the bases of the program. We also look to development, develop and implement solutions to improve resiliency. When I talk about critical assets, I'm talking about all your critical assets. We looked at transportation and evacuation routes. We looked at critical infrastructure. This is where you'll find any of your utilities, your public works, your police departments, so on. We also look at your critical community and emergency facilities as well as natural, historic and cultural resources. We look at several different storm events on several different planning horizons. We're looking at both the 100-year storm event as well as the 500-year event for the current year and two planning horizons, the near future of approximately the year 2050 and the far planning horizon of approximately 2080. What this means for precipitation depths, I've shown here on the screen. In the current 100-year, that might be a precipitation depth of 10.6 inches, but in the year 2080 for a 500-year storm, that might be 28.21 inches. So a drastic change in precipitation depth as we move through time and increase in storm intensity. When we talk about flood risk, we're looking at it as either a maximum depth or a percent inundation. For critical assets, which are a fixed point, we're talking about a maximum depth at that point. When we talk about parcels and roadways, we're talking about the percent inundation. And roadways are looked at in segments from intersection to intersection. We take our flood risk and we also have to look at a consequence of failure. And what I mean by that is not everything is created equal as far as the consequence of it flooding. The example I like to give, it is much more impactful if an emergency operations center floods versus a park. Both have an impact, but when we take our flood risk rating and we take our consequence of failure and we multiply those together, we end up with a sensitivity rating. So as you go through the document and you're seeing the findings, these are the sensitivity classifications that we're talking about and we've color coded them. An example I like to give is for sensitivity classification is high, you can get there in a couple of different ways. First of all, a school that has a consequence of failure rating of three, it's inundated by a depth of one and a half feet, has a sensitivity rating of nine. A fire station with a higher consequence of failure rating of four is inundated by a lesser depth of 0.75 feet, has a sensitivity rating of eight. They're both still sensitivity classification of high. As we completed the analysis, we started to see focus areas develop, specific areas of the county where there was clustering of assets that were impacted. So here you're seeing focus area one. You're seeing a few municipal assets and municipal roadways, but you're also seeing some county, private and state assets as well. In focus area two, you'll notice here that your Sampi Road comes into this focus area as well as a private transfer and recycling facility, a lift station and some other agency roadways. Focus area three includes all lift stations that are city owned. And I will be honest with you, it is not uncommon to see lift stations in these vulnerability assessments. It's just the nature of where they've been historically placed. Also looked at all of your municipal critical assets and wanted to capture those even if they were outside a focus area because likely your focus is going to be spending your implementation dollars, whether that be through grant or otherwise, on those municipal assets that are at risk. So again, here we see some lift stations come up, some additional roadways and some bridges. I do not expect you to be able to read this screen. It is small and I understand that. But what we have done here is taken and for each one of the focus areas, given a bit of a priority to each of the assets, what might be implemented to help it be more resilient, a planning horizon for that, and then identifying some possible responsible entities or community partners. So an example, a lift station that is found to be impacted, you might relocate it, you might elevate it, or you might just flood proof it. Any of those are a possibility. So our project roadmap, we are here this evening presenting this draft of Vulnerability Assessment and Adaptation Plan for your consideration. If you do adopt this, then we will move forward with finalizing and, finalizing that report and getting it submitted to FDEP. And this is all in anticipation of a funding deadline of September 1st for the next cycle of implementation and grant dollars. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just one, I'm, I'm very sensitive to this being on an island. And some of the conversations I've had recently is about water up into our rivers and how we're not allowed to, we're at a pretty much all time high right now before there are gain. And I'm told that's going to continue. And I know we've talked before about the 500-year floods happened in the Carolinas three times with the global change. Does that take any of this into consideration, the, the rising water levels and backing up? Because we're, we're surrounded by lakes and rivers and things like that.
So it does, but it does not. So it's looking at what normal is and certainly we've seen plenty of non-normal lately. The program does not require to look at increased stage elevations for inland water bodies. It's focused primarily on just those coastal areas where you have sea level rise specifically. So it does not look at increased stages of surrounding water bodies.
But that water still has to go somewhere, right? And if those rivers and everything?
We could run so many different scenarios and look at, in that case, it would be a downstream boundary condition that we would be altering. As you get into looking at different scenarios, future planning horizons, as well as larger storm events, your level of uncertainty increases. So we have to kind of pick the median, which is our best available information we can operate with. But we do, in the report, we do talk about the uncertainty and it goes, it can go either way. So you may see more, you may see less.
I'm asking for a specific question. I wish Tim was here. This goes back to, to our zoning. Does our zoning need to change based on climate change and based on this flooding, these flooding issues? And is this a study that we could adapt to how we prepare? Because, you know, like the, like the Carolina said, you know, don't, don't use the last 50 years. You better think about what the next 50 years.
So actually, in the adaptation plan, the first line here is a detailed code review to identify necessary to identify necessary or beneficial updates.
Okay. With that, do I have a motion to... A motion to adopt 2025-34?
Motion to adopt 2025-34.
Second.
Second. Do I have any further discussion? Any public discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and take the roll.
Councilmember Carroll, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Fike?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
Aye.
Mayor Keough?
Aye. Thank you very much. That was very, very good. Okay, next on the agenda, item three, consideration of approval resolution 2025-19, agreement between Florida Department of Transportation, Florida Turnpike Enterprise, and the City of Groveland relating to O'Brien Bridge replacement and improvements, as well as maintenance, operational, and ownership and responsibilities.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, TJ Fish over Transportation Public Works. We have tonight with Florida's Turnpike Enterprise. We have Pam Nagoo and Stephanie Sharp, who has been a team that's been working with your staff the last several years. The widening of the turnpike, now you can physically see activity today, and if you drive it, I hope it's the right time of day. Right now, from Mineola to Groveland, it's going from four lanes to eight lanes. And for Groveland, that project includes something very significant. The split interchange that has historically allowed traffic just to go to Orlando or get off at Exit 285 is being restored, as it was originally built more than 50 years ago, to a full interchange. So that is one of the great assets that we've worked with the Turnpike Enterprise in making that happen. You all now know what a PDNE study is, Project Development in Environment, thanks to State Road 19. Well, this one dates back basically more than a decade. In fact, my role, serving Groveland then, was with the Lake Sumter Metropolitan Planning Organization. And as they moved into design to widen it to eight lanes, I was now part of the Groveland team directly. And so we've known about the segment from Mineola to Groveland for some time. Now, we're into the mode of, there's a contract to be let in September to start construction from basically the Groveland interchange north to the Leesburg ramps, which is, has been part of a four-mile-apart ramp system that include the Groveland ramps and the Leesburg ramps. So now Groveland will have a full interchange, and the next segment to be widened will be that segment from Groveland to Leesburg. And that includes a replacement of one asset that is impacting the City of Groveland, and that's the O'Brien Road Bridge. So I'm going to jump in real quick to the presentation. We're asking you tonight to consider Resolution 2519. It does approve a memorandum of agreement with Florida's Turnpike Enterprise. Basically, it is because of the pending O'Brien Road Bridge replacement. And it is O'Brien Road, the roadway itself is a City of Groveland collector roadway designated in our comprehensive plan as such. That designation, I'll explain in a moment, is about what happens in the future. We'll talk about what the new bridge would entail if the MOA is approved tonight, and what the City of Groveland's responsibilities would be, including acknowledgement of a detour that will take about 18 months that I'll show you on the map here in just a moment. So the resolution approves the MOA. It's completely focused on the O'Brien Road Bridge. The MOA will result in a new bridge to replace the existing. The existing was built, again, more than 50 years ago, and it was really an agricultural bridge to provide access across the main line between properties that were at a different use as agriculture back in that time. The MOA defines what the bridge will be and acknowledges that there is 18 months of no bridge at all in place. So the existing would be removed, a new bridge would be added. That detour will just direct existing traffic, which is extremely low on the north side of the bridge. Very few residents and/or property owners, they will just utilize State Road 19 as their primary route. And then those that live or have businesses on the south side, whether it be the Candy Factory or Phillips Landing, they'll simply do what they typically do, which is use US 27 in absence of that bridge for the 18-month period. And again, O'Brien Road is under the jurisdiction of Groveland. So the widening from four to eight lanes is significant within that existing right of way. There is some right of way being acquired, mostly for stormwater retention, but that eight-laning necessitates the bridge to have to be removed and replaced. And again, the contract for construction will let in September. So this is one of those final details that Turnpike staff is dealing with in preparation of that construction contract. So once it goes under construction, it's a four-year-plus project. And basically, for O'Brien, it is City of Groveland. It's a collector roadway by designation. For those that maybe have not experienced all of O'Brien Road, it starts up near Howie in the hills, just south of Dewey-Robins Road or south of County Road 455. It connects from State Road 19 at the north end of the service area, across the turnpike, intersecting with US Highway 27, through the Ford Commerce Park by Carroll-Fulmer Trucking, where it has a signalized intersection. And Groveland's jurisdiction extends then across 19, past the Duke Energy Site that was built by Skinnell, where the pavement ends, Groveland's responsibilities end, and so that's O'Brien Road. The bridge, being under Groveland jurisdiction, immediately begs the dialogue with the Turnpike Enterprise on what will happen, and thus the MOA. So with that said, here's what the bridge looks like today. Been there a long time. You can see, it basically is just a roadway crossing over. There's no shoulders, no bicycle pedestrian facilities. So it's what we call functionally obsolete by today's standards. And then the proposed functions, a wider bridge, which is great, because we also need a wider O'Brien Road, as O'Brien Road is also a substandard roadway, about 18 feet wide, that is tantamount to a Grove Road that has hot-mix asphalt on sand. So not very elaborate width or base, and that was one of the reasons it was designated a collector, to see it improved over time by others, not necessarily the City of Groveland. So this will result in 12-foot-wide travel lanes with eight-foot shoulders on the side at Groveland's coordinated request, a 12-foot trail on the west side, and a five-foot sidewalk on the east side. Why? To promote activity and connectivity by the humans, not just the vehicles. So anyone living in the area would be able to access opportunities on either side. Right now, you've got commercial development interest along US 27, adjacent to Phillips Landing. And so those are some of the thoughts as we look at what connectivity can be accomplished in Groveland, knowing that we're working with investors as they possibly develop to get those improvements made. So here's what the profile looks like with the 12-foot trail to one side, the sidewalk on the other, and the travel lanes and shoulders. Then one of the other items we were able to successfully get agreed to by Turnpike is that the bridge itself, once constructed, has, you know, new support system, as shown on this graphic. And in both directions, northbound and southbound, they've agreed to place, based on this MOA approval, the Groveland iconic G, part of the Groveland logo, so that it's prominently a gateway feature for those traversing along the turnpike through Groveland or about to exit at Exit 285. So the responsibilities per the MOA, Groveland assumes jurisdictional maintenance, already of the roadway, the same of the bridge. The bridge's estimated lifespan is 70 years plus. No immediate maintenance costs, but definitely coordination on biannual, every-two-year inspection of the bridge through DOT. That's not Groveland having to directly do it. They inspect all bridges in Florida through DOT. And then long, long-term, there would be the ability to plan for and budget, if needed, any other levels of maintenance. We're really talking more about maintenance than outright repairs. If there were something significant that occurred, that could be an accident above on the deck, that would be left to Groveland, just like any other roadway or guardrail we would have to address. But as far as the supports, one of the things I asked right off the bat is, let's say a semi goes awry and plows into the supports of this bridge. Where are we on that? And the response was, well, that's the main line at that point, and the Turnpike would absolutely have to be involved. So that's one of those questions I want to put out there that I asked immediately as well. And again, the long-term, it's not so much resurfacing, it's not even an asphalt surface, it's a concrete bridge. So the maintenance for this bridge is really a little bit different than you may expect. It's certainly more long-term than anything in the immediate short term. So the detour that would be involved is shown on the screen, and this, left to right, is actually south to north. State Road 19 is on the bottom of the image in green, crossing both under 27 and the turnpike. You see O'Brien Road wind from 19 there in the bottom right corner. It goes through some agricultural land before getting to the bridge, which would be closed for that 18-month period. So those on that side would go back to 19, and then those on the south side of the bridge would continue to access US Highway 27. So tonight, we're asking you to consider Resolution 2025-19, approving the memorandum of agreement for the O'Brien Road Bridge. And again, Stephanie and Pam from Turnpike Enterprise are here to help answer any questions.
2519.
Motion to accept 2025-19.
Second.
We have a second. Discussion, Amy Jo?
TJ answered my question with his last comment about semi plowing into pillars, because that's all I could imagine. So we're good.
This question is just, I know we had talked before about traffic studies, because we've got that one coming up soon. How much traffic does the bridge see on a normal, you know, day, on a daily basis? Just curious.
These days, if I recall, I mean, it's so low, it's less than 1,000. In fact, it's a few hundred vehicles ever.
So there's not a huge inconvenience factor, which you had talked about earlier on, but I was just curious what that traffic study had indicated.
They've identified there's a concrete plant on the north side. They'll continue to access back to 19, and then the chocolate factory, Phillips Landing on the south, so yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
No questions?
Just a few. Cindy, did we go through this? Because there's some questions on what the borders are, where it says, "O'Brien Road resurfacing" and all that, that we're responsible for. From now on, it doesn't limit it to a certain area. There's also that one sentence, "If there's any health hazards or hazardous materials, we're responsible for the cleanup." There, we made sure that we're not exposed on any of that?
Bearing in mind, we would have jurisdictional maintenance responsibility per the MOA. Anything that's actually on the bridge that could potentially affect beyond the bridge itself automatically becomes a coordination issue, but really, for staff looking at, what kind of maintenance treatments are we talking? It would really be more that it would be repairs if a vehicle damaged. And when I say damaged, you've got barricades that are part of the profile to separate the trail and sidewalk from the roadway. So that's concrete, that's solid. So other than that, it would be more about the surface of the bridge over time. And again, it's not an asphalt surface, so even if we resurfaced O'Brien, it's not necessarily the bridge. The bridge would be a whole different maintenance treatment, longer, longer term than a typical roadway.
But going into the thing, we don't have any issues, any asbestos, anything out there on that pipe?
Not that we're aware of.
Asbestos pipes or anything like that?
No. In fact, we would have to get a permit, even if we wanted to affix a City of Groveland water main, which is definitely a consideration, we would have to get that permitted through the Turnpike Enterprise, because it crosses over there right of way. But that was one of staff's considerations, is could this bridge provide us the ability to attach any type of utility? Probably not wastewater. That's a whole different ballgame, but when it comes to a water main and the ability to loop both State Road 19 and O'Brien Road for water pressure purposes, that is a consideration.
Are they going to demolish the old bridge?
Absolutely.
So why wouldn't they just build this the way that road comes? Why don't they just build the new one next to it and let them keep using the one that's there?
That was a consideration. There was both cost and time factors that played into that, that would prolong it and make it more expensive. And that was one of the questions they asked, that I said, "That's a city council policy decision, if they're willing to accept the detour." But candidly, because of the low traffic, staff did not really have an obvious objection to bring before you.
There's one clause in here, that any profits made by that bridge goes to the state. Do you have some kind of revenue-producing toll?
Troll. We're going to put a troll under the bridge.
I mean, I thought it was kind of funny that you'd have that in there.
I suspect, I don't want to speak, because we have Pam and Stephanie here, but I believe that may be standard language that the toll-based enterprise uses in many of their agreements, that they have the right to collect those revenues.
Anything that I should be asking you that I didn't ask you?
Not that I'm aware of. I think this has been a pretty hearty discussion.
Okay, thank you. Any further? No? Seeing no further discussion, any public comment? No? Public comment? Let's take the roll.
Councilmember Carroll, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Fike?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gaines?
Aye.
And Mayor Keough?
Aye. So passed. Number three, consideration of approval, resolution 2025-19, Department... Oh, we just did that. Oh, we're on to... That was so much fun, I wanted to do it again.
I knew we had a ball.
Wanted to bring it back for another one. Okay, reports. Councilmember reports. We'll start with Amy Jo.
I just got one thing. I went to the Institute for Elected Officials. It's put on by the Florida League of Cities. It was great, lots of information, especially being a first-year council member. Learned a lot there. So that's pretty much it, though.
Fike?
Okay. So on the 3rd of June, I had a conference call with Hillary from Keep Lake Beautiful, and we spent some time reviewing the grants that are available to Keep Lake Beautiful, and the grants, some of those that we already have, and kind of forward-looking at different projects. We had a discussion about different things to help with, again, Keep Lake Beautiful. And one thing we've been kicking around, I've talked to Mike Walker about it, are the trash pickup stations. They're kind of a A-frame, it's got pickers on it and bags and so on. Though that could be addressed in grants, it's a forward-looking project next year with Keep Lake Beautiful. I discussed it with Mr. Hein, something about, could we get some sponsors? We're investigating how much they are and whether they're not just worth the city buying them if they're not that expensive to put in the parks. So that's kind of on the calendar to continue to talk about. Wacky Wednesday opened on the 4th at Cherry Lake Park, and it was huge. It was packed. The kids had a ball. It was hot, so those water slides really made a big impact. The gentleman that had the animals on display, I didn't go near the snake, but he did have kind of a cool blond skunk that I scratched on the head and moved on. On the 5th, there was a meeting with Joshua Fulch from Cherry Lake Preparatory Academy and Robin Hughes, councilwoman from Mascot. We were meeting regarding an anti-bullying initiative that Robin is working on. There's some momentum that may initiate itself with Cherry Lake Prep. It's not, we're just waiting for some finalization of that. I will bring that about when that is finally ready to move forward. That evening, I went to the adult basketball playoffs at Hope International. So that tall gentleman I'm standing next to is Willie Briggs, and he is a recent graduate of Hope Preparatory. And I don't know how tall he is, that picture doesn't do it justice, because I think he's like 10 feet taller than me. Anyway, he just received a full-ride scholarship to college to play basketball, so I know that Hope Preparatory is very proud of him, but Groveland should be as well, because he is one of our Groveland youngsters that's going to go on and do great things. The 7th, I went to the farmer's market. I always have to go in and get, you know, some bread. And then I went to the Caribbean Jerk Festival in Claremont. It was hot, 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 very hot. It was fun, it was flavorful. You can see the photos, Sean Parks was there, the Chamber was there, Pastor Bloom was there, which is great, because he had a great interview with South Lake TV regarding his Latin festival coming up in October. So there was a lot of great things going on there. Let's see, on the 11th, the building blocks had an auto show. Kiwanis was collecting cereal boxes for their food bank. They had a full lobby of the big food boxes. Well, not for their food bank, for our food bank that go to Patricia Cry and her folks. It was a busy day. It too was very hot. We had our police department there, we had our CSI team there. I did volunteer to lay down and be, you know, be chalked on the pavement, but good idea, too hot. Anyway, we had lunch at Guru on the 12th to celebrate the 70th birthday of Uday Kadam. And, you know, there's some pictures there. I have to say, it was a great event. Tim Marie and Cassie from Claremont were there, David Colby, my girlfriend Nancy, who's in town, tagged along. And he wanted 700 people to attend to celebrate his 70th birthday. He was trying to give back to both the police and fire of Claremont and Groveland. And I think kind of off in the corner of that picture on the left, you might see somebody from the Groveland Police Department sitting there. But again, our CSI team was there. I told him I was still volunteering. It was a great day. Pam Jones of Representative Webster's office came and gave Uday a birthday proclamation, which was very nice. That night, New Beginnings Thrift Store had a... That night, New Beginnings Thrift Store had a disco event, had the opportunity to go to that and participate with them. Linda and Steve Smith were there. They raised $1,350, which was awesome. On the 13th was the Heart, the Lake League of Cities has now been renamed the Heartland League of Cities. Long story, but it's been adopted. Cal Rolfsen from Mount Dora spoke about the legislators that are discussing eliminating property taxes to cities and counties, and what stressors that may or will present to each, should it go through. This is, 27 legislators will be traveling to take public testament, it's not yet scheduled. There's a lot of questions, if it should be reduced, how to replace those taxes, or what to replace those taxes with, should they be eliminated or reduced. So Florida League of Cities will be analyzing this a lot to identify the negative issues of tax reductions. There'll be surveys provided to councils, no date yet. The big question is what will happen to your city if this comes to pass. Florida League of Cities and cities will work to have data prepared for testimony. FLC will analyze all information, and a white paper will be prepared. And just as I was walking out the door to come here tonight, I got an email in. I haven't had a chance to digest it, but it came in from Florida League of Cities, and it is about the teams that are being put together that will come out and start doing some of that testimony. So Amy Jo, you probably got a copy of that email as well, you should have been copied on it, I think. So it's a lot to digest, and we will see where that's going to move forward. And that evening was then, of course, Juneteenth. We did the barbecue judging contest, which was fun at best, and it was kind of fun at the end to see who the winners were, once the scores were tabulated. We had a lot of passionate speeches, we were entertained by Victory Boyd, the Grammy-winning songwriter, as the evening moved on. I think we really have to give a big thanks to all vendors, all who participated in the barbecue. It was delicious food, delightful wares at all the booths, and now that we won't have Second Friday for two months, we do have July 4th coming up, so they get a break, they get to, you know, kind of stay out of the heat. We did a flag retirement ceremony at Lake Catherine Farm on the 14th, it was the first. It was super well-attended by a lot of scout troops, don't have all the numbers, but, so natural fiber flags were burned, and the rest were shredded, and then the stars were cut from the blue portion of those flags to be able to be presented to veterans. There were well over 500 flags retired. I'd really like to congratulate Robin Hoover for being so involved in that with her effort to pull it off. Many thanks to the Lowe family for the opportunity to use the farm, and Pam Jones was again in attendance, went back to the farmer's market. This is some random stuff, and I think it's important to know. I stopped by Cherry Lake Park to look at the work on the new pavilion going in. I ran into Alicia, who's sitting in the back, and she's like, "What are you doing here?" And I'm like, "Well, what are you doing here?" And IT was there, working with South Lake Electric, to do some grounding work for the electric work in the park. And Alicia was explaining that, you know, right now, well, maybe not now, because I think they're done, the electric work up there was vulnerable to lightning strikes and so on. So they were in there doing all that grounding effort. If I said it wrong, I apologize, but I think I got it pretty straight. So there's things that go on around us all the time that we may not know about, but sometimes we stumble on it. And finally, my October huddle is in the planning stages, we're just waiting to get the date on the calendar, and I'm done.
In addition to the weekly meetings with the city manager, I was interviewed by three girls, three young ladies, who are going to be going to the girl's state in a matter of few days. They wanted to get my take on what it's like as a woman to serve the public, to be a public servant, so I was interviewed by three young ladies. Additionally, I attended a cantata meeting. November 21st, there's going to be a South Lake County Christmas cantata, and all are welcome to practice and attend this big deal. This is the first one for Lake County. I went to the Lake 100 lead luncheon. I also attended Juneteenth, as the rest of the council members, and, let me see, I too attended the flag ceremony. And I'm on the committee for the Elise Tomlin incubator committee. They are going to be selecting two businesses for the incubator spaces that they have at Elise Tomlin. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. To move on, you can see the same pictures here, so I appreciate all the invites and the different places that I was able to attend. But let's move on to a few housekeeping things. Mr. City Manager, last, two weeks ago, we said we probably want to bring the charter recommendations back before the council. Is there any movement on that, that we can put on our calendars?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you're aware, Anita was the staff person who's going to present that, so when she's back in town, we'll get it on the calendar.
Okay, that sounds good. And could you possibly send out at one time, all I can find is the timeline for the committee, but we had a timeline that took it all the way to the vote and backed it in. Is it possible to maybe send that back out to us, so we can understand?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe what you're asking is when the deadline is to get things on the ballot for the November election.
Right, right.
We'll send that back out.
Next, the Avalon Project, we put, we were going to put a strategy together, I guess we're waiting on the city attorney for that, too.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the direction was for the city manager to work with the city attorney to develop a plan. We have developed a plan. Anita will be writing to the developers with the attachment. The council considered asking them if they're willing to reconsider any of the items.
So that's already in process? Oh, great. The Doge, we had a Doge update. I don't know if, I put these beautiful slides together on that, but I'm sure they're not available, but the Office of, I'll just give a summary. The Office of Policy and Budget, OPB is what they call it, within the Executive Office of the Governor, is authorized to review local governments' functions, procedures, and expenditures for fiscal years ending September 30th, 2024 and 2025. What I'm reading into the record is kind of what, the synopsis of what they just sent us. The review aims at, to identify the use of resources for diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives inconsistent with the laws, instances of significant overspending, waste, fraud, abuse, or mismanagement, and redundant government functions. The OPB can examine various records, including financial documents and personnel standards. Local governments receiving state funding must provide access to their personnel premises and data systems within seven days of a request, or face fines for noncompliant. OPB will submit a report by January 13th, 2026, highlighting reviewed governments, summarizing findings, and offering recommendations for better governance and fiscal responsibility. The section allows OPB to engage further activities to fulfill its duties, and will expire July 1, 2026. I just wanted to put the summary in there, because I also got a note that they've received all of our documents the city manager has sent up, that we're in compliance with what has been sent so far, but I know that we had said that that was going to come, we're going to start getting some people here, but that's the information we have so far. So by September 30th, they have to have a report ready for the governor, so we ought to be seeing them pretty quick. With that said, one more item, I'll just wait. Okay, we go on to public comment?
Louis Chern.
Hello, thanks for inviting me for the benediction. Two things, one personal, one for Congregation Sinai, that one first, we're just trying to find the Jewish people in the area. And I noticed that, you know, we have events all the time, and one thing we hear constantly is, "I didn't know there's a synagogue in Groveland." And I looked on the Groveland website, and there's nothing there that lists any places of worship or anything else. And if there's anything that you guys could do to try to identify them, because we can't get into a lot of the communities, we can't even go onto Facebook, because you have to be a resident of the community. I live in Trinity Lakes, so if there's anything you can do, I have no idea, please, we would appreciate any help. One other thing for Congregation Sinai, I thanked the Chief Ramsey. Whenever there's something that happens anywhere in the country or the world against the Jewish people, like there was the thing in Colorado last week, we ask for more patrols, and he always comes up for us. So thanks to the police department. And the thing for myself, I live in Trinity Lakes, and we are not allowed to have irrigation in our backyards. And when, I have friends that live at Trilogy, and they can. And what I was told by the water department is that if it's in City of Groveland, you're not allowed to, but Incorporated Groveland can. And if there's anything that can be done, I don't know what we have to ask for, because we have reclaimed water for our front yards. I don't know why that it would be like that, but if there's anything you can do, our backyards are all horrible, so I would appreciate if you could raise that as a topic and see if we can get irrigation in our backyards.
I think that would be something that we could get Mr. Fish to talk to you about it, because...
Mr. Fish will chat with you on the way out.
That's news to all of us, so I think he could probably help you out with that answer real quick, and you can take it back to your HOA.
Great, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you. I have a note from Robin Hoover that she wanted to read to the group. Robin Hoover, 1387 Ardmore Road, Groveland. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Staff, and guests. I wanted to share the details about the flag retirement ceremony, a beautiful day to honor the Old Glory on Flag Day. Almost 500 flags were respectively retired, with nearly 200 people in attendance. A heartfelt thank you to everyone who helped make it a success. Thank you to our sponsor, American Legion Post 55. Thank you to our venue sponsor, the Lowes of Lake Catherine Farms, and a huge thank you to the scouting of America, Lake District, Pack and Troop 551, Pack and Troop 268, Pack and Troop 787, Pack and Troop 998, and Pack and Troop 957, all participated in Saturday's flag retirement ceremony here in Groveland. Thank you, and we'll look forward to doing it again next year. This was a big learning experience, just put that on the record, and the mayor said I learned so much at that ceremony, and it was very, very well done, and I think it's going to be something that a lot of people are going to be attending in the future, because the more we talk about it, the more people are fascinated. So with that, is the end of public comment. Let me go to the manager, any staff comment?
Just always enjoy coming, and no comments from Anita to give to you tonight.
Have an easy night, Sandy. Okay, well, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you all for coming.